We're at 5:33. Any agenda amendments?
Well, only that if Carol is delayed in her presentation, obviously we want to move that. And I'm pretty much giving my time to her because I know that we had promised, as you have another meeting tomorrow, that we could be more efficient.
Okay. So I did.
I did.
I know.
I didn't.
I know.
I didn't.
I should try it here. Competing correspondents. And we have a couple of members of the public here. Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Do you have anything specific that you'd like to speak to?
Yes, um, recently been in communication with you Julia and Christie regarding a concern about the use of school channels for the distribution of non-school program-sponsored activities. So, we're here just to get some clarification on what current policy is and see if there might be some opportunities for us to further clarify or delineate the school versus these non-school sponsored groups.
So after receiving your email, like I said, I reached out to Christie and in conversation with Julie, it sounds like that's something we're going to take up at the SU level about getting a policy for the supergrids union which would flow down to the schools. Was there a specific, something that specifically triggered this for you or?
There's a religious sponsored group that went space in the school. My child has received communications through their Friday folder for this school. There's also signage on the bulletin board. I understand that you open it up to everybody, that's fine. What I'd like to see is maybe some guidelines and parameters around how the school's channels are being used. For example, on the bulletin board, could this policy be, it has to be clearly disclosed, who is the sponsoring organization, who it's not affiliated with the school. I think for us too as parents, is understanding what does constitute a sponsored school program? Is PTO considered non-school sponsored or does that fall under the umbrella of the school? So just having some clarity around that for us as parents would be really helpful. I think the other piece too is, again, in the spirit of clarifying the school versus these organizations, the use of the school parent calendar, should it be built into policy that these are included or excluded from the school calendar? Oh, food for thought.
And my intention is to, when I received a copy of the email, I looked to see, we do not have a policy. There are recommended policies in this area. As you can imagine, there's a let everybody and there's a be restrictive.
Right.
So, I want to start with our leadership team in all of our schools and really discuss what is current practice? What are the issues that you see? And go from there because I've worked in schools where we've worked through these things. Sometimes schools do it differently, sometimes they do it the same, but there are a lot of, you raised some very good points.
Thank you.
It's something we want to go back.
We appreciate you exploring that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think we want to clear a picture around that. And it really is, I mean, we understand it's not about the hosting. It's about, and let me, the impression of sponsorship or endorsement. We feel concerned that we don't want the school to put itself in any position where it is endorsing any, you know, non-school group.
Or perceived as endorsing.
Yeah, I think it's the perception piece.
And again, it depends on the question. I mean, when we're talking about, you know, student sponsor, that school thing, it's a different sort of thing. I mean, that's, but it's really that having a line where you understand, you know, who is sponsoring it and whether it's endorsing the school.
Yeah, and I think especially in small communities like we have in our SU where the school is sort of a hub for the community, it's definitely important to have a clear policy. So, I think it's great that we're going to be exploring that across the SU really.
Yeah. Thank you for taking it on. It's a big issue, so.
Happy to do it. Thanks. All right. So that might be something we can bring up in our following your leadership meeting.
Yes, absolutely. Once we start working through what we think would be the policy direction, then we'll go through the various school districts and at the very least where we would be developing procedures.
Yeah.
To make sure. Although if you do an all or nothing kind of decision, then it is good to have policy around that and back it up with procedures about how you clarify things and how you know.
Good. Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
So, on to approval of the September 11th board meeting minutes. I'm going to suggest that we move that because Emma wasn't here for that meeting and so we'll move that until Sean gets here. Assuming that's appropriate within the context of the agenda. I think Carol, we're waiting on this. If you're ready, we can have a business report.
Sure. I don't want to take up a lot of time either, but I can if you can. So the financial report you received via email, I didn't bring hard, I do have one hard copy if either one of you want, but I thought email would work for you guys. Not a lot to say really. We still are yet to receive the first tuition bills and that's really what I'm waiting for, but the largest thing that you'll notice is the special ed assessment has been updated and that's always a, you know, influx. So, other than that, I'm not concerned about anything, just monitoring staffing and those sort of things, but projecting about a $60,000 carryover right now, so feel comfortable with that. I didn't have any questions about that financial report? No? Okay. I also brought you warrants through the month of September for consideration. Those are all your new bills. Which is now SU day actually, transitioning to being your accounts payable person, that's part of our transition at Central Office. She's our AP person for all the schools now other than MVU.
Okay.
And she likes it, so. She's doing a great job. Lisa's transitioning with her right now, so.
Okay.
So I'm going to make a motion for the approval of the warrants through September in the amount of $335,238.23.
All right, I will second. All those in favor of approving the warrants through September in the amount of $335,238.23, say aye. Aye, vote. Thank you.
And I did bring you draft one of your fiscal year 20 budget, which is easy to me, that's fiscal year 20. Basically, all I've done is looked at potential in moderate increases to salary and benefits because we're going to be negotiating professional agreement. We do know that the support staff is a 50 cent increase to the base, so I've accounted for that. I've also adjusted your health insurance increase. I'm not sure if I made you aware, but it's an 11.8% increase this year. So, depending on how we end up with negotiations for professional staff, I've left it the same cost share as the previous years. It's surprising, I'm just trying to be careful with my words because we are in open session, but you'll notice that the increases to your professional salary lines are not as large as they typically are. If you look to what's budgeted from last year, but if you look at the anticipated, we had a few resignations this year that led to cost savings that have then helped your situation this year, so it's good. I just, I kept going back and looking at it. It's because I was surprised too, but it's a good, it puts you in a good position to start your budgeting this year. Overall, I also added about a 2.5% increase just as an earmarked figure to all your assessments and your purchase services, just to have some dollars to work with right now because it's so early. I did not adjust any of the tuition lines. Was looking at class sizes though, and this year is a little bit bigger of a, or the graduating class a little larger so than last year, so we could see some increases there and we know that can have a significant impact. But overall in draft one, you know, I'm showing less than a 1% increase right now with the numbers I'm using, so.
One of the things as we start developing this is that we had talked about earlier this year, the athletic budget. And so maybe that's something that you and our athletic director might sit down and prioritize and then we could talk about that at our next meeting, what the anticipation, what he's anticipating meeting and what the priorities are. The only other question budget wise I had was, do other schools in the SU have, I can't think of what the term is, like funds, capital improvement funds?
Some of them do, it's handled differently. We have one school looking at bonding right now. They've had capital reserves in the past. It used to be the capital reserves tended to be more for very specific purposes. So for about 10 years ago, or almost 10 years ago, when I first arrived at Franklin Northwest, it seemed the philosophy was if you need the funds for a specific purpose, say you want to replace a roof, then you raise capital reserves funds for the purpose of a roof. Then it turned more into just a generic capital reserve. People were more comfortable because they just didn't know, didn't like their hands being tied if something was coming up, you know, that then took priority over the roof, then you have to go back to taxpayers. So then it kind of changed into that. Then we had this language with the new article language from the state of Vermont that was, we were forced to use and that makes it very tricky for voters when it comes time to vote. If you remember, it's like, you know, your spending per equalized pupil is X with a budget, but if you have a capital reserve, then there was a whole nother paragraph underneath that that said, "Or it could be this if you approve article number two."
Which makes you not want to approve the capital reserve expenses.
Right. Or you're just confused and we were afraid that that would be detrimental to the school board, you know, just the budget vote. So, some schools at that point chose to bring those funds into a line in their budget.
Okay.
Not all, but some started doing that. So, everybody's sort of doing their own thing. MVU did a large bond last year. They waited for these things to, you know, and they developed a very extensive plan and they went for a very large bond vote. So everybody kind of handles it a little bit differently.
Yeah. And it may not be necessary, something like that, because we're talking about a potential bond, but I just.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if that was something that we should have.
I think because, my professional opinion is that because Sheldon has talked about this for so many years now, that you're probably in a bonding situation where it makes a lot more sense. And then if that failed for whatever reason, then you could look at something smaller with a capital article. But again, then you have that issue with the wording of the articles that people are voting on, that's confusing, so we have to do a lot of marketing of what we're truly asking.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you give me the thing that, see if I can make it work?
The other thing that I've been thinking about is if we want to separate out the end or budget separately for security. And not for all of security, but right now when we, when there's anything we do around security, we'll take it either out of supplies or building and maintenance or, it's coming out of different things and I just wonder if the transparency about what we're doing security wise might make more sense to be a separate line. I don't know if you see that. I believe MVU used to do that. They would have a safety and security.
But I think that, well, I'm not as averse in MVU's budget, but I think it was more for their resource officer and those kinds of services that were in that line, but it's definitely something that you can do and I think it's, you know, it's a valid point given.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not, and I'm not necessarily talking about large amounts of money.
No, no.
But for instance, we ordered the lockdown magnets and there, we ended up buying some very inexpensive ones, which may not end up being a good purchase, but the, you know, original ones were like, you know, $3.50 each, while we have a lot of doors. And so that, those kinds of things add up and it just, and I just wonder if there are, and there's some other things that would go under that.
Yeah. Having a good operations budget within your budget where you've got, I know some schools have, when they've had a bond and at their end of their bond payments, they would intentionally keep that line item of the bond payment in the budget so that they could build their operations budget to keep up with meetings. Things like that.
Yeah.
Of course, you're at the beginning of that discussion, so that would be a long conversation. But, you know, making sure that you have your priorities listed out and you have maybe a three-year plan and you know what your community can handle as far as an amount you would put in there, you know, that's, but then sometimes big things happen, like roofs and boilers and.
Absolutely. I just think that those are the, in the past year and a half, the majority of my questions from parents have been around security.
Yep, absolutely.
So if it would help with that, showing the investment.
Yep. It's nice.
And rather than having to pull from different pods or different places, it would be, you know, the ones that say to place.
Yeah, I mean, I would see it still be part of your plant budget, you know, operations budget.
Yes, still there, but just be really intentional about having that separated out. And then the other place that we've talked about before that I think is perhaps underfunded if we look at other buildings as well, is our paraprofessional professional development line. It gets $1,000 total for all providers.
Yeah. Believe it or not, it's not a large line in any, that's, I think some have earmarked more funds and oftentimes not had them be utilized. I think I definitely hear now and from what I gather that that's changing and there's more opportunity for support staff than there used to be, so yeah, I agree with you on that.
I just think, you know, it is not necessarily something that all parent educators want to access, but if we have even two, that's.
Yeah, it's gone.
That's more than.
Yeah.
Two workshops is more than what's in there.
And that being a sometimes hard to fill position that might help entice people, so.
And we're, you know, we have parents who are faced with different kinds of students in terms of their needs and we have to sometimes seek specialty kinds of training.
And I know, I brought this up before, but I would also think your replacement cycle in under plant also, I mean, I know that the philosophy has sort of been if we have money left over, then that's typically what we use it for and there's nothing wrong with that, but again, if you're looking for that transparency and that clear, you know, purposeful representation of how we're spending our money and planning ahead, I would argue that, you know, planning for carpet replacements and table replacements and chair replacements should be a typical repair and maintenance cycle and properly budgeted for on an annual basis and not necessarily if it's available, because then unfortunately, sometimes it's not.
Right.
I think history has shown that.
Yeah.
That we don't have a lot left over and I don't see that changing much.
Right.
Considering the.
Right. I mean, your budgets are tight. There's not extra money in the budget, you know, so that's difficult, yeah.
And I think you're right in terms of transparency, that it's a need for the school and so it should be budgeted for, right, other than crossing our fingers.
Especially when you have opportunities, if you think of that painfully, when you have opportunities through attrition or some kind of savings that you're happening, if there's turnover in staff, that you can sort of try and, sometimes we experience that as savings because we want to do that. Other times you can reinvest it in operations in the plant.
I know last year was difficult because there was an equalized pupil drop and just, you know, some difficult things happening in Sheldon with your tax rate, but I think hopefully maybe if things stay as they are right now, that might be not the case this year.
Do you have a question? Thank you. Sure.
So Carol's here.
All right. Welcome.
Carol, what is it here you want me to open?
The power push first.
All right, let's see if that's the thing that says overhead.
Oh, school board, go with the school board.
Okay, close that. Data over years?
Yes.
Okay, let's go with that. Now, has everybody met Carol? Carol Legott is our after-school programs coordinator, crossroads director, and she organizes and runs and manages all of the after-school programming in all of our schools. And this year is a grant, many of our programs are sustained with the help of 21st Century federal money and those grants end and have to be reapplied for. So, this was an opportunity for Carol to come and speak with all the boards in NSU about the schools and the programming and let her go from there.
Okay. So, Franklin Northwest Supervisor Union actually has eight different after-school programs and we have five summer programs. The funding, the way that works, it's a 21st Century Community Learning Centers program grant and it will pay for us, since we've been in it now for 13 years, it would pay 50% of the program. Okay? So, if you go to the next slide.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it's doing this to the slideshow, sorry. I'm leaving. I can do it, you know.
All right, so Franklin Northwest started with 2005, 2006 grant and it was specifically for Swanton Highgate Franklin MVU for grades five through nine, looking at it as middle school kids don't have anything and that this was a primary substance of youth prevention effort. So, that is a five-year grant and then within that time Sheldon had been running an additional year and they were running it through the town, not the SU. And it was based on, they were looking for childcare to subsidize it kind of thing. So they started it for first through eighth grade and it was going to be half paid for by subsidy is what the thing, as well as the 21C. We ran into problems, well, we didn't run into, but Sheldon Aspen, the director in the town, ran into problems managing it and they had approached the SU if the Sheldon Aspen program could join the SU and come under our umbrella, basically. So that did happen and in the meantime, we also expanded, in 2008, 2009, we expanded the crossroads program to include a high school program and there was great interest in the Swanton and Highgate Elementary School to expand to second and fourth, second, third and fourth grades. So that happened. These are competitive grants, so you have to fill in about 50 pages or more of information and then you're competing with everybody else in Vermont. So we've been fortunate that we've been approved for all of these. In 2009, we ended up doing a consolidation grant because we had After Hours, we had Explorers, we had Aspen Grant and they were all on different years, so they wanted it in different budgets, so we were consolidating. So that was another grant writing we had to do. So, and then in 2014, 2019, we applied again and we have continued now and this is our last year. So we are looking to the boards to say, "Okay, do we want to continue?" Because I need to know because the grant is due the end of January. So, something that I've been purposefully doing the past couple of weeks is meeting with different potential program partners and this strengthens your application if you have community buy-in. So one of the things, I should have brought it, but the allowable, the allowable things that you can fund with this 21C grant, some of them are like expanded library service hours. So, I contact, I've been visiting the libraries and talking to them because our program is Monday through Thursday because we've always had difficulty getting staff, our kids to stay for Fridays and it was, so we are Monday through Thursday. The state and the federal government really want you to have five days a week, so I'm approaching the libraries to do a Friday. So if they can do three to six on Friday, and they would be written into the grant like that. So they would just need to pay half of that cost and the grant would pay the other half of the cost. So it would be no burden to us, so anyway. So we're working on, I'm working on that. I'm also talking to the town rec departments that have rec departments and also getting their buy-in, also looking to see if maybe they would like to take over the afternoon of the summer, because we have summer morning programs, but there's nothing in the afternoon, so we're approaching those rec departments, consider doing that. So, these program partners just add to the strength of the grant and so, so I think it's looking good. The two, I've spoken with two out of the four libraries so far and they've been all been, and I've spoken with one rec department so far. So everybody is pretty excited and so, so if you think of any program partners, people that would come into programming or might donate money to the program, let me know. So, so you can see over the years, our participation has been very positive and increasing. That dip in 2015, 16, that was when the Sheldon program was one through eight and it just became too much to have the first grade, it's because every parent wanted to be in. So it ended up being, we didn't have the funds to supervise that many kids and then the school board at the time had said, "Well, you should make sure that everybody has a chance." So this session you can have some kids and the next session have different kids. Well, the problem with that is the 21C grant, they look for regular attendance, so if I did that, poof, I have no what they call regular attendees. So it hurt us and then the coordinator at the time was having staffing issues and not having enough staff and she found all her resources were going to these first and second graders. So that's when we had the state come into a site visit and that was the recommendation, "Why don't you try to narrow your focus with the grades?" So, that's what that dip's about. So, next slide. Okay, this is just to show you an overview of the after-school and summer programs right now have a budget of $800,000. $425,000 of that is 21C grant money. The big chunk on the bottom, that light purple, yeah, that's the food service program. That's Vermont Agency of Education Nutrition Programs has funding for snacks and meals if you qualify for the meals. So that's what that big chunk of money is. We also have that green in the middle there, that's $71,000. That is our Team Northwest tutoring dollars. That they're under our umbrella because they're local funding that support the tutoring and tutoring happens during our after-school program and during the summer program. And then there's like the top three and the blue, those are the school budget allocations. Those are local funds presented as part of the school budget. We also have a really neat one. The one that's two up from the nutrition one is the staff in kind. Now Sheldon is very strong in this one. This is an excellent, excellent school, they linkage as well as school support and what it is, is the school in kind. That's also added with in kind from other sites, but Sheldon has the biggest proportion of something like $6,000 worth of the end of day for the parish. or something like $6,000 worth of, the end-of-day for the parent education is 3:15. Kids are dismissed at 2:45. So the program starts at 2:45. So what happens is, parents who aren't busy with the classrooms or assignments from their teachers, they will come and they work to help staff the after-school program from that 2:45 to 3:15, and if they want to continue working, we pay them. But from that time there, that's time they pay by for the school, but they're actually in the program with the kids, helping with the kids. So that is an in-kind dollar that adds up over the year, that reduces what Sheldon's board would need to pay, kind of thing. So that's, that's a really good program mesh, you know, because the parents are where the kids are, kind of thing. So, so I just wanted to give you an overview of that. I'll give you a copy of this. This is the end of the school year. We have sessions, we have like four to five different program sessions, it might be three weeks long by eight weeks long. At the end of the year, we, every session, we do a course listing for every program's schedule. So this is showing you a snippet of the end of the year, what their courses they offer, the daily attendance at each of the sites. So it goes on to the back. And you can see the kinds of classes, the number of students, but on the bottom of that first page, you can see there's a summary of how many. So FNWSU has 905 students who participated in the program overall. And participating, so looking at target grades, because we don't do first grade in most of the sites, for the SU, that's 57% of all the students in Franklin North Supervisory Union who attended one of our programs during the year. And then regular attendees, that's, the regular attendees is what the Agency of Education measures. They look at those kids, these are kids who have attended 30 days or more, and if they have attended, research has shown that we can have an impact on them, on their academics and school day attendance. So when we report on any kinds of test scores or anything in a global sense, it's only on the regular attendees that they look at. All right, and I have some, a couple, I got the summer flyer here and the fall flyer. So you can look at these as well. And so we're, there's 160 21st Century after-school sites throughout Vermont, and nationally, I don't know how many there are nationally, but there's a lot of 21C through the, out of the country, there are all over the country, these 21st Century Community Learning Centers. And every year, they have what they call Lights On after-school, and this is a celebration to, to bring people, to make them aware of the after-school programs and the benefits of, and all that. So we have a little invitation, and in here, I have all the Lights On activities that we have going on this month, this is the month. So, do you have any questions at this point? So I have a video, and we can watch the video, which will show a sampling. This video I did for our 10th year anniversary. Need the sound now.
Told you something always goes wrong with my sound. There is no sound coming out of this thing. And I know you have great music.
I know.
Carol, do you want to put your laptop on? Told you there's always something. We may have to pause. Where are your plugs? I have both, I have H, uh, H, yeah. I can get that in, you can get that in.
You can shut off.
I shut that off.
Turn you off.
It gives you time to look at the material. You know how it is with sound, beautiful ways. You dumb it up, and you have to restart your computer.
So all these great programs are only possible because we have some awesome site coordinators at our school sites, and Sheldon is definitely a shining star. And it's great that we get, we have school day teachers who work in the program, which just brings a whole nother element to reinforcing skills. And there's also, you know, that social-emotional piece that we actually are dealing with in the after-school program, that I think helps kids work through what's appropriate and stuff like that, because it's a different kind of setting. It's not the formal, as formal as it is during the school day, so.
Oops, sorry. Oh my gosh, what's the sound?
I think it's probably because you're plugged into the.
Yeah. There's the audio. There's speaker.
There may not be audio, they go through those speakers.
I don't think there are speakers on that.
If you wanted to, just unplug, we could plug it there.
Go around the computer.
Yeah, well, that's interesting. Let's try it if I take this out.
You may have to restart it, but.
All right, so put it over here. All right.
Yes, I do.
All the way up.
Is that all the way up?
Here we go. Can you see it?
You guys can't see that.
This is also on our website, the after-schoolprograms.fmwusu.
Well, I guess we'll just keep playing. I'm almost there. I do think that Carol would like, you know, whether it's emotion or not, but if there's a continued commitment to support, I think that then helps support the application for the grant.
So we are, you will be applying for the grant, Carol?
Yes.
That is a definite.
Well, that's up to the school boards. If everybody says no, then that's something.
Sheldon has a continued commitment toward providing after-school activities to our students, then, you know, that certainly makes sure that we move in that direction.
Yeah, I think it seems like a fantastic program. I'm glad that it's opened up to so many grade levels. I think that's really important. I'll continue to support the wonderful program. Probably would be helpful to have a motion. Probably would be helpful to have a motion. To have an entertainment motion to commit to continued support of the Crossroads after-school program, and programs in Northwest and Sheldon. So now I make it, okay? I would like to make a motion to offer support, continued support from the Sheldon board for continuation of the Crossroads program.
I will second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Thank you.
And Julia, those other town meeting minutes did come to you, they were supposed to come in April. There was emails going back and forth, and then they did come for approval on the 8th, it was in the board packet.
Okay.
I don't have a signed copy with me, but they did come to the meeting as part of your 5A board packet.
Okay.
And they look the same as the other one.
No sign.
If that helps at all, I thought. I checked my email to see if I could find anything else. Sure, it won't be back until Monday, but I can check later then.
Yeah, that would be great, just so we don't have two floating around. If we don't, if we don't have them or she needs another copy, we can do that, right? Okay, so we are on to old business, Act 46 update. I know I have quite a bit. Guys don't mind me starting. So I went to the N M V, the Northern Mountain Valley U U S D meeting last night. It's the Berkshire-Bakersfield. It's a lot to say. Yes. So that was, it was helpful to go to that, I think it's important just to start that conversation, because it is a possibility. And so they are sort of in a land of confusion as we are, because they could double-size after the secretary's recommendation, or they may say this, you know. There's a lot on the table for them as well. So they have been going through, sort of moving policies to their board and getting those things in line for when the new board will take effect. All right, well, second, all those in favor of approving a September 11th board meeting minutes, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? If you want abstentions?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And Julia, those other town meeting minutes did come to you, they were supposed to come in April, there was emails going back and forth, and then they did come for approval on the 8th, it was in the board packet.
Okay.
I don't have a signed copy with me, but they did come to the meeting as part of your 5A board packet.
Okay.
And they look the same as the other one.
No, it's fine.
That helps at all, but I checked my email to see if I could find anything else. Sure, it won't be back until Monday, but I can check later then.
Yeah, that would be great, just so we don't have two floating around. If we don't, if we don't have them or she needs another copy, we can do that, right? Okay, so we are on to old business, Act 46 update. I know I have quite a bit. Guys don't mind me starting. So I went to the N M V, the Northern Mountain Valley U U S D meeting last night, it's the Berkshire-Bakersfield.
It's a lot to say.
Yes. So that was, it was helpful to go to that, I think it's important just to start that conversation because it is a possibility. And so they are sort of in a land of confusion as we are because they could double size after the secretary's recommendation, or they may stay the same, you know? There's a lot on the table for them as well. So they have been going through, sort of, moving policies to their board and getting those things in line for when the new board will take effect. One thing that did come up, and I don't know if you guys know, or if we can find out, so I had thought that our transitional board would be our clerk and our school board chair. Their understanding was that that is for, how do they say it? Existing districts, but because we would be moving to a new SU, that our select board would have to appoint two people.
I don't know that, but I'll find that out.
Yeah.
Because we received draft articles that went through what it would be for, let's just take Franklin Highgate's Mont and M V U, right? You have a group of schools in an SU, you create a transition board, and they identified the board chair and the clerk as those, you know, me too under statute you have to have. So you do that, those are the folks that would be looking at policy, essentially they'd really just be focused on building a budget and making sure that there's an election to elect a permanent group of people who would move forward. This situation is different, they have an existing entity, and others would be potentially joining it from within and without the SU. So, all right.
So, yeah, so Morgan's, Morgan Day Valdo, his manager, his thought was that, for example, Montgomery would have their clerk and chair because they're already within that SU, but because they'd be joining, it would be different for us, is what he thought.
Okay, I'm gonna speak with the, I'm meeting with the superintendent on Friday to talk about just a couple of these things that we have in common, and I'm gonna talk to her about that, and I will also be in touch with the A O E on what they're directing schools to do.
So they are going to try to begin developing their budget, but they're, my impression was they're gonna keep it pretty skeletal until the state board comes out with their recommendations, because it's hard to, they could be creating five different budgets depending on what the configuration is. We did talk about different seller schedules, and what that would, it would likely mean, both Sharon Bakersfield, Montgomery, if they're part of it, moving towards our seller schedule. They're also non-indexed, which, so it's the same as ours, which is very helpful, but again, that will all depend on whether we end up there. So that was, I mean, I'm gonna go next month, if anybody else would like to go, they would be happy, they were happy that we were there, they definitely appreciate them starting that conversation now, because there is so much work to do if that is the place that we end up. So, the Secretary of Ed has agreed to have a phone conference with us, so that is confirmed for October 30th at 2 o'clock. I think I forwarded you guys the number, so you guys call in that way. With it being a phone conference, we may want to have one spokesperson, rather, I think if it's in person, you can have more of a conversation, but I think phone conferences are sometimes hard to have multiple people talking at once, so if we wanted to, if one person wanted to speak on behalf of the board, and just outline our points, some of the new stuff that has come up, and just sort of remind him of what's at stake for Sheldon, I think that'd be good. And October 30th is also after the next S School Board, State Board Education meeting, so it might be too late, but I'm hopeful that if they do make any decisions on October 17th, it'll be not Sheldon and maybe some of the other school districts that are more obvious for them to make a decision on, at least that's what I'm hearing. So, the other piece, I don't know if anybody else has seen, in writing, the standards by which they're gonna judge the A G S proposals, at their, so at the last State Board of Education meeting, they came up with standards by which they would evaluate the plans. I haven't seen anything, a draft form or anything in writing yet to explain what each of those pieces.
No, I knew from the Secretary of Education that the October 2nd meeting was gonna be talking about criteria that they were gonna use to judge the Section 9 proposals, and so then we saw that, and they were talking about larger than 20% discrepancies between cost per pupil, so if you had a town with a ton of debt and a town with real low per pupil spending, that that may be a further discussion. They discussed if you had a 706B process vote, that that would be one of them, and of course, we did not go that way. And then there was the non-contiguous piece, which could have an impact for Sheldon, but you are adjacent to the SU, so there's the corners that are not quite there, but you could make that argument. And there was another one, and that's not jumping to my mind right now.
Districts or SUs have emerged in the last two fiscal years.
Yes.
So, I mean, I think out of those, the non-contiguous districts would be our, a place to hang our hat, I was just hoping they would come out with something in writing that clarified what non-contiguous meant to them.
Does it mean South Hero in Georgia?
Right.
I mean, that's clearly non-contiguous. You're not, correct me if I'm wrong, I've just looked at maps, and, you know, but, but you are adjacent or contiguous with Ennisburg, and then Bakersfield is sort of kitty-corner, and Berkshire's kind of, I've probably gone backwards, Bakersfield and Berkshire are kitty-corner, but they're not quite touching.
Yeah, I don't think we.
They're rich, right? Because Franklin, Ennisburg split us.
They don't touch one another, and they don't touch us.
Right. How can they merge if they're not contiguous? But they are within an SU, and you are, it's not the same thing as saying you're gonna Jordan with Franklin West, which is a completely non-contiguous SU, but you have a case there.
So I, I was hoping that they were as close to Fletcher as we are to Bakersfield or Berkshire.
True.
Yeah. And verify. Inside all this town.
It's one.
Yeah, I mean, so I was, I was hoping they would come out with it in writing, so we could read it, dissect it, so I don't know if we want to, we can direct somebody to draft a letter, because my thought being, is when they come in, they're, I would suspect they'll come out with this in writing at some point, hopefully, at which point we should respond with, we feel we meet this criteria, and this is why. And so if that happens before our next board meeting, it might be wise to direct somebody to write a letter.
I can do that for you. And beside, is there anything besides the non-contiguous piece? You made, do you meet the criteria for geographic isolation as well? Did we make that point last time?
We did.
Yeah.
But they've never once again given us a clear.
Didn't they, and they haven't responded to the letter that you sent on behalf of the A G S, right?
No, I, no, I just have a response from the support staff requesting minutes of board meetings approving the Section 9 proposals, which has nothing to do with our letters. I think that's probably another metric that they're gonna use in their decision-making. So I will definitely write another letter and send it to you, Julia, to just roll your eyes over, see if it works for you, and, okay. I will do that.
I know, I know. So at the meeting last night, when they were over budgeting, Dave, Morgan, Dave Aldo, business manager, had last year's budgets of each school up on the screen, and so ours was, seemed significantly more, and so I don't know if that impacts per pupil spending.
Not necessarily.
I don't think so. I wonder if there's a 20% difference.
It probably has the per pupil spending, if you want, if you get all of them. It's under my state stuff.
Do you, did they mention, or do you know, their total enrollment? What, the largest school's total enrollment?
We've seen that before.
I know.
We've had an opportunity, I don't remember what the numbers are, but we've had an opportunity to look at that.
I didn't say that, I was just wondering how many more we are than that.
Could be close to being Bakersfield and Berkshire combined.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I mean, really, I don't know, if they might have, combined, they might have a few more than us, but I think we're really.
No, I was, I know that we are certainly the largest.
Yeah.
Bakersfield.
Is it looking at this year?
This is 2007, fiscal year '17, but that's what I have, they had 210 equalized pupils.
Yeah, and Berkshire, 299.
Their spending per equalized pupil was higher than you are, I think.
We have 13. Berkshire has 299.
Bakersfield was $13,727 per equalized pupil, but that was 17, so say it was even 14 now.
So where's the, more, I'm more than Montgomery than any, out of that group there.
Which one is the K8? Yeah, they all are K8s, okay. Just gonna say, cause that can change your. Everything's just clear, so I think. Let's use Bakersfield. But look at their, here's Montgomery, being in line with their spending, but their equalized pupil is significantly less.
That's gonna save a far fewer.
Yeah. 183, what is your, in fiscal year '17? Yeah, their spending as well, though. They're 230th in the list of spending.
For the state rank? For Montgomery?
I think this was different, this ended up being different.
Gotcha.
That might be budgeted for people, because I think we ended up somewhere around 11,000 per pupil, right?
No, I think they're more than that. You mean for '17, you mean?
Yeah. I think we, I think I remember, we ended up lower than initially.
Right, when they do their budget collections at the end, and their actual staff books, they change it again. 11, 976, so it's very similar to Montgomery, actually. Oh, actually, year 229, they were 230, the state ranking. And Berkshire was 207. But there's 13,136, that's gonna jump.
So we probably don't meet that 20% threshold.
Would not think so, no.
So, I mean, it's another argument that we can make. Oh, so they also reported out that Montgomery ended up voting to join the lawsuit, and that sort of leads me to the conversations we had, the SU level, and the clarification that we got around the lawsuit implications. So I, I think this is open session appropriate.
Yeah, I received information from our school attorney that agreed with what Bob was sharing, that there is no reason you can't pull out of a lawsuit as a plaintiff, you would just need to time it so that it would not, if your intention was to do it and be all in, that's one thing, if your intention is to do it to make a stand and to be supportive, but not actually want to incur any costs, then you're going to want to pull out at the time that it is filed, right around that time. And, you know, you could get into, you know, owing a little bit of money, but that would be just a small, you know, if you waited till your next board meeting, kind of thing, I'm sure it wouldn't be a big piece, but that's completely up to you, and the board was not in a place last time where they wanted to make that motion, and yet we've had, we had an SU board meeting, and, you know, they asked us to, all of the schools to look at that, and whether you wanted to make motions, I think some of the communities wanted to wait to see what happened with Franklin, too, so.
Did he verify costs, too? I know there's a couple of numbers floating around.
That's just speculation. Right now, you, it all depends on how many lawyers, how long things cost, and how long things go, if everything is settled in two months, then it's one amount of money, if you have 20 school districts involved, it's less, if you have six, you know, so that's the other piece, if we all sign on and then we pull, I mean, you know, you just don't know.
So I had emailed Margaret, just trying to get some clarification, and so I said we understand we're not financially obligated until the lawsuits filed, but what, what timeframe is it? So she said that they'll file as soon as they can after the state board votes, they're meeting on October 15th, the, the group that's bringing the lawsuit together, at which point they'll talk about specifics of the lawsuit, and they'll file within seven days. And so if that's a route that we want to go, I would suggest, I mean, I don't know how, I think we'd wanna have a meeting, like, as soon as the plan comes out, we probably won't have a meeting anyway, just to digest it, but we'd wanna have a meeting to either reaffirm that this is something we want to still do, or this is something we want to pull out of, because I don't know what the process would be after they filed, if you want to pull out. So that's a risk.
The other part of that is looking at if the board is going to make potentially two different timetables of rulings, like, we have the first one where they're gonna come out, and as they said, they're gonna take out the low-hanging fruit, and then we have the second one, that's also something to think about, does the, does the lawsuit get filed after their first one, because some of the schools are gonna be affected, and then other schools will have a heard what their final decision's going to be, having to, so, I mean, there are some timing issues to think about. And who know, we could be in a situation where they wanna file the lawsuit, but the state board hasn't made a decision on what happens to us, because we might be in the second round, so.
Right.
Which still might be, we just have to play it by ear.
They're setting up a defense fund to fund the costs. Just scanning email. Errant has paid costs of approximately $5,000 per community, but likely send that. Right, it's hard to say at this point, and we can't use ed dollars to pay for this, right? If that's something we wanted to do.
That's what I understand, I haven't confirmed that, but I, I suspect strongly that that is true.
Yes. So if that were the case, we would be needing to find funding from somewhere else.
Which is part of why it was an easier decision in Franklin, I think it was easier generally, because people show up and they do this thing, but also there were community members who said, I'm a fundraiser, I already have so many people who are pledging X number of, you know, so they essentially have that, that covered. So they essentially have that covered. And so, however, I think you all felt very moved by Bob's conversation, and, you know, there's, at this point, it doesn't cost anything, so.
It's definitely different information than we had when we made the decision last time, because we thought that decision was, we're all in.
Right.
And, yeah, if we feel confident that we could meet the timing, but maybe say, this is our, we want to be a part of this to just represent and make that stand, might be something to think about, because, I mean, again, we've discussed, we don't seem to have the same community fervor involved in this.
I think it's hard, too, because there's not a lot of information yet that we have.
Yeah.
You sort of get it if you sign on, and if you don't. I feel sort of, I feel sort of bad if we signed on and, well, never mind, forget that.
I don't know about bad. I know what you're saying, though, it's a mixed message.
Right, I want, apparently I want to sign on, so we can get more information.
Did you have that conversation with Margaret about, you know, because I've heard a lot of, if your district is not named to be forced to merge, then of course you're not a part of it. That's where I did check with our attorneys to say, so even if we are told we have to, but the board says, eh, I don't know that we have the money or the political will, and we really want, you know, and change your mind that way, you don't have to have a reason, you can just change your mind, and that's okay. So I wanted to make sure you weren't doing a thing that you'd be locked into.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's that dilemma of you feel like you're supporting, but, and then getting the information, and then not sure what you're gonna do.
Right.
You're not sure what you're gonna do, so that's a part of the challenge.
I'm comfortable with the decision we made last time. And there was, at the SU meeting, you know, Bob mentioned, and it just was like, okay, so there's an option for us to maybe stand up a little bit more and say, no, we really are against this. I do get the idea, though, if we're just in it to say we're in it, and then failing. But, so, I mean, I, there's part of me that I'm, I'm okay with what we did last time, if we want to stay with that.
So your decision was to hop on?
No.
Or was not to?
It was not to.
Because the information we had at our last meeting was that if you sign on, you're signed on.
Right.
And we just felt like there wasn't enough community sentiment in Sheldon, that we didn't want to commit, and we didn't have the, the understanding at that point about funding. So we didn't want to commit taxpayer dollars to something that we hadn't gotten a lot of community input on.
Okay.
And we're also, we're not 100% sure even what they're arguing or what they're, I mean, we have some ideas, but we don't really know.
Right.
What is your goal, what are you arguing?
Right.
What's the purpose? And not knowing that, and then knowing that if we invest, we might not have taxpayer support to spend that money.
Right.
Win, lose, or draw. I mean, like, we might not, so that, that was just where we kind of made our decision to not join.
So, but at this point, we have a little bit, there's clarifying information around the cost, right? So that is no longer an issue, and I don't, I mean, our taxpayers haven't really been presented with any of this information. So I don't know if that's a conversation we have.
Well, it sounds like we couldn't use taxpayer dollars anyway.
Donations, but at least have some sort of, right, I mean, who, who knows, but
Non-schools.
I'm not totally clear what the sentiment of residents would be. It could, it could really blow your mind, or not, but I don't know, not, not really exploring those two reasons, the reasons why we said no. I don't know if at this point it would make sense, if there's no harm, no foul, why, I, I say why not? But I wasn't involved in the last conversation because I was a here, so.
Yeah, but I think, I think that's part of why we want to discuss it again tonight. It's because we do, we all have this information now. I, I agree that I think... No, yeah, like you said, no harm, no foul.
I agree with that. I would just say, take a look. There's not a single person sitting there. I don't think there's a lot of community sentiment that's really concerned about this. If there was, I think we would have heard a lot more from a lot of people.
I agree, I agree with the notion of the people here, but the last time we had that large 46th meeting, the gym was packed. It was packed, so, just saying.
Yeah, for the vote.
For the vote.
For the vote.
For the information, I mean, parents were, wanted more information for some reason. We don't have a great turnout at these meetings. Why, I don't know. People will say they're going to come, and unfortunately, they don't for whatever reason. But if you really categorize a specific meeting is going to be about this, this is what we're going to talk about in that kind of form, it might be, or it might not be. I'm just saying. I would just hate to be like, no, we're good, and then have people be like, well, we really wanted you to do this. So I, I don't, they might not say that, but I just feel like it, we should dig a little bit deeper, but that's just one opinion.
I have had very few parents approach me. Their question is always, well, it is typically around school choice.
Yeah.
So do we still have?
Right.
Will, will a merger mean that we have school choice?
Right.
And my answer was, the proposed merger means we would retain school choice. And so there's, the second question is, what will this mean to my taxes? And my response is, I have no idea, and I couldn't even predict.
Right, no, we tried, there's no, there's no...
And so I think that that shuts down a conversation really quickly, like, I don't, they don't, most people don't even have other questions to ask, because they don't know what they would be.
Right. I agree that people are really concerned with school choice.
Yeah. So the concerns that have come to me have been around staff, Sheldon staff, right? Those have been the, the greatest concerns, whether they're Sheldon residents or not, right?
Yep.
But really, in terms of parents, or other community members, I, you know. But I don't have anything to tell them either, so I don't know.
And I, I agree, I don't like making a decision without information, and I don't like that they're not giving us that information. I understand why they're not, to an extent. But I just, I hate the idea of this being an option and not having more information about it, which makes me want to sign on, so we get that information.
I think that they're also waiting to get information from the people who are signing on.
Right.
Because it's not a class action lawsuit in the sense that everybody who had a problem with this product signs on about the problem with this product. It's representing multiple districts who all will have, is it a contiguous argument? Is it a geographic isolation argument? Is it a 20%? Like, everybody will have different circumstances, and those will likely be represented underneath a more constitutional argument about overreach.
I would say those are, if I've had any comment, it's been met.
Yep.
That people are kind of offended that we had a vote. Why, why is someone saying what we have to do? But even those have been few.
Yeah.
Not many.
Right.
So, my feeling would be to get more information. And if that means signing on, then I would be comfortable with that.
I agree with the information piece. I agree, you know, I don't want to just sign on to say, no, thank you.
Right.
Which, I, that feels a little old yucky. But without information, we don't know that, I mean, we can have a hunch, but I don't know. There's so much up in the air, but you can't make an educated decision around any of this. I don't know.
It sounds as if you're thinking about making a motion to sign on to the lawsuit. And, and that you will reaffirm that decision or overturn it at a future board meeting, depending on the, the information that you get at that meeting. And obviously, the decision in the state board.
Right.
I'm just going through timelines in my head of, they're having this meeting on the 15th, there will be potentially decisions made on the 17th, which means that they may be filing that week. And like Sean said, there's no indication of whether they'll file immediately, you know, whether they'll wait for all of the decisions to be handed down, or...
Will there be notice of filing before the 15th?
I'm not sure.
They certainly had a warning when they did the records request. That also serves as a notice of a potential filing, but I don't know if they'll do a separate one.
I guess the question is, how serious are we about the lawsuit overall? We could decide to jump in, test the water, and then jump back out, if you don't like the way it feels. If we're really serious about it, then we need to get answers on the questions that we have about the community, which is gonna take work, because we have to go out and figure out what they want, because if we're going to be serious about joining the lawsuit, then we need to find information. So I think there's a couple of things we need to look at in figuring out what we're going to do. And then, of course, that opens up a whole other can of how the heck do we get and figure out what the community's gonna do in a couple of weeks, and what their feelings are. Not even a couple of weeks at this point.
Right.
Potentially, if they file a lawsuit immediately after the first decision from the, the state board. Not that I have answers to those questions.
Yeah, they're good questions. The timeline's not helpful at all.
I think that there are a few existing systems within the school to contact families of school students. There's not the same kind of systems to contact other community members. So I think that becomes a little bit more difficult. I know we've, we've sent postcards to registered voters. I don't know if that means you would get information back, what that postcard would look like, how people would get you information back on that.
Would you pay for the postcard posters at school, don't you?
We can't, if we're gathering information, we can't just say yes, and we can't just say, you know...
Which is, you know, why we sent postcards before, just to ask people to attend everything.
I mean, you could always do some kind of online Google survey, which would be a pretty easy thing to do, but getting it out to families is one thing, getting it out to the broader community.
It's always been a problem, for me, is how you reach those people.
You can put it on websites, you can put it on, you know, maybe town websites would do it, but how many people go to their town website unless they're paying taxes that week or something?
And we don't have one.
Right, and you don't have one. That's right, because I looked for it.
So that's not gonna work. The Historical Society.
These things need time to do.
Yeah.
And my, my suspicion would be that how a parent feels may be different than how another community member might feel.
Yeah.
So we can't make an assumption based on one cohort of the population.
I like that, what we're talking about in terms of getting input from the community. I don't know that the timeline allows for it.
It's holistic.
Because if we have this, you know, they'll have this meeting on the 15th, and we, we need to make a decision.
On the 16th.
16th or 17th. And it's hard to...
When you go get postcards out, but that's...
Right, exactly.
It took us three days.
And it's hard to get feedback from the community if we don't have information to give them, right? We need the information from the meeting on the 15th to inform the community.
Yeah, they're gonna ask questions, what are our chances, and what does this mean? How much money are we dropping, where are we gonna find it? That's bake sales, right?
I don't have answers.
Can't have this money.
Yeah.
So, we sold a lot of moms. Moms are a good seller. We're getting out of that. So unfortunately, I don't think we can make a decision with any more community input than what we currently have. That being said, I would like more information on the lawsuit. However, I can understand that not being reason enough to join a lawsuit, so.
Would you like us to make a motion to revisit our decision?
I don't feel like you'd make a motion, you can make a motion.
True. Are we, I guess I should say, are we ready to make a motion?
I'm ready to vote on the motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to, would we revisit our...
We didn't make a motion last time.
She asked if anyone wanted to make a motion.
Oh, right, and we, and I didn't say anything, that was it, yes, I didn't say anything.
Good memory.
Yes.
Well, I was asked a lot about it, and I was saying things like, well, they didn't make a motion.
Right, we just sat silent, I remember that now, yeah, I was thinking something else where we had the weird wording of the motion where it was to... That was something different, different situation. So I would like to make a motion for us to join the class action lawsuit. Do I need to make specific details about what that lawsuit is? That, about the Act 46 merger, and whether we will join or not? For informational purposes, or should I say that? I don't know, do you want to put that in there?
Maybe you want to add, with the intention of revisiting a future meeting?
Yeah, so I'd like to make the motion to join the Act 46 class action lawsuit, with the intention to revisit our decision either at the filing of the lawsuit, or the decision made by the State Board of Education.
Hold on a second. Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I appreciate the very thoughtful discussion, like, I think it's a really tough mission.
It's hard.
And it's very thoughtful, though. Yeah, so I definitely, I'm glad that we were all able to have input into that and really consider that, because I, I do think we are in a different situation, because we don't have a lot of data from the community at this point, so.
It is, and make a decision on something that has a hundred... It is, and make a decision on something that has 100 different variables and you have no idea where... And one variable could change how the other one, you know, how you look at something else, so it's, yeah.
So, with that being said, the meeting is on October 15th. I believe it's in Montpelier. So we'll want to discuss availability.
Are you going to reach out to Margaret?
Yeah. I don't know if we can even coordinate that at the end, maybe? And we'll move on through, we'll move through our agenda and sort of coordinate that later. Anything else on Act 46? I will have an update at our next meeting, about the, and the, um, their next meeting. And like I said, if anybody would like to come to that, you're welcome. I will get the next date and send it out to everybody. All right, new business snowplow bids.
I'm going to put that up. It's because I tried to make it bigger.
So, Kristy, the spread is fascinating, isn't it?
I know. Whenever they came in, Hazen and I, it was like, almost like Christmas. Like you ripped open the envelope and, "Oh."
So does Hazen have a recommendation?
He, yes, yes and no. We have used Goodhue, um, excavation for the past three years, I believe. And they've done a good job. He's been, he's been happy with them. I did, I did add in there, because they've done it, I, I was able to add a little extra information, which is that when we had a lot of ice last year, they did come in with a skid steer and they broke it up for us, at no extra charge. And, uh, one year when we were having, when, uh, it was a couple of years ago when we had all that snow, we were having a winter carnival and, um, but we couldn't actually move in the field because there was so much snow. And so he came in and did some plowing, like on the field, so that we could access the snow but be able to walk, at no extra charge. So there, there, you know, he has been very generous about if there's something else we need, he'll do that. We've, we've not done business with the other, um, companies that bid, so I really don't have any information about them. Clearly, you know, there's a top half that we will not be accessing. I was like, wow. And because Goodhue has done it for the last three years at that price, it seems like that that has been a fair price. So the, you know, the least expensive one up there is still, you know, within about a thousand dollars.
Does he feel confident that Dairy Construction has the equipment that they need to do that?
I think so. He is local. So, I have some questions. The Dairy Construction. Uh, what if we got snow after the 31st of March? Would there be an additional cost? It didn't say that in the bid, but that, that would be the assumption. So we were, so we did think about that. One of the other bids said, anything after the certain amount of time, it'd be like $500 per plow, but they were a much higher bid. So I would imagine after that time, if we got snow, there would be an additional charge for that. And did, I see one of the companies, um, specified when plowing would be done before, like a timeframe? Did any of the other ones give that? Uh, they didn't, but Hazen did tell me that when he spoke with them on the phone, that he told them that it would need to be before our buses came. So it would be, it would have to be before, um, 7 o'clock.
Just so you know, I sent, I sent Sheldon's information, um, to at least three other contractors as well. And nobody, there was no interest, but I was doing it for other schools too, and I thought maybe it couldn't be in everyone's best interest, but, so...
This is the complete group.
I'm, I don't, I'm... I would like to say that I had a competent recommendation, but I don't know.
We've never had any issue in the last three years with Goodhue?
No, there was, uh, Hazen gets here pretty early. There was one year when, um, there was one particular day when, uh, no one was, it was 6 o'clock and no one had come. And so Hazen called Goodhue and he said, "Oh, it didn't snow up here at all. I'll be right down." And so, you know, they came, they came down and he said he had kind of looked at the weather and it didn't seem like it had done much here.
That's Vermont.
But he did come. Uh, he did send people and, and it was fine. I encouraged Hazen last year to, um, there were, we had a lot of ice last year and I did not think that there was enough, um, salt or sand to go down the cheese. And so he spoke to him and he started adding more. And then Hazen also went out like midday to check, to see if we just needed to add more throughout the day, not just during the plowing.
It was a struggle in general. I don't know if there was enough TUs in some places, yeah. But that was everywhere.
And actually, he, uh, Hazen and I talked about that today. We have typically ordered significantly less than, um, Franklin, for instance, and Swanton in terms of how much salt we put down on our own. And so, um, Hazen's going to order more this year and use that a little bit more generously. And will Hazen be using the tractor to do the sidewalks this year? Yes. Was that traditionally included? No, Goodhue. Okay, so we have always done that. It's just the implement that he's used.
Yeah.
The tractor will give us the opportunity to, you know, fix something if it needs a little bit more. You know, which is a good thing.
Typically, this is, they say it's in, in their truck. So this is what can be done without leaving your truck or your piece of equipment. The rest is what the school's responsibility is, typically. The board can make the decision based on any parameters that they want and what they think is the best interest of the school district, so it doesn't have to be the lowest bid, if that's a worry, or...
And the, you, you had said the price Goodhue's charging us with the, the proposed bid this year is what we've been paying the last couple of years.
That's what we heard the last two years.
You know that they can do it. They've done a good job. I think we keep, keep doing business with them.
I definitely appreciate how responsive he's been. Like, you've talked to a few different examples of, um, them going above and beyond, which is appreciated.
It is nice when you know that they are bidding the same amount that you've been charging before, so that gives you an idea of stability, and that isn't unknown with any other vendor.
I would like to make a motion to accept the plowing bid from, uh, Goodhue Excavation.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the plowing bid from Goodhue Excavation, please say aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Kristy, can you, you, that, send that to me so I can have my, I'll draw up a contract.
All right, um, I I tried to pack a lot of information in, but also keep it pretty short, because I don't have to, I can certainly not order read all this to you. We will be using our in-service on October 18th, that afternoon, to analyze student data. And, and that's what, that is what's happening around that issue. So we're doing the same thing that other schools are doing with our teacher teams. We will have unified arts teachers meet with their SU colleagues. So music teachers will get together, PE teachers will get together. This is not necessarily data that, um, that is super meaningful for them in their classes. They bring a lot to the table when we talk about kids. This is really about academic data and what are we seeing in that? And so just, um, just for your information, I thought I would share some of the types of things that we'll be looking at at each grade level. There's a few places where you'll see it says, um, current Sback block assessments if administered. And that is because we are also going to have, um, some time in November to look at student data. And so we just said, "You need to administer a block before, um, that November date." So if you do it now, great. If you do it a little bit later, we'll look at it later. Either way, it's, um, good information. But for instance, um, 34 is doing F and P testing right now. Fitting in a block assessment before this in-service seems like a tight timeline. Um, so they may look at, um, the block later. But, but they will all do that before, um, our November in-service. They all will also, um, look at current student work. If they need to do some calibrating or talking about, you know, what is this, um, are these good benchmark pieces for looking at other student work along the year. I will be going to Killington on Thursday. We are being awarded, um, an exemplar award for Vermont PBIS for the second year in a row, so that's pretty exciting. I just shared some of the communication that we got back from the Vermont PBIS team. And this is based on data we have to send them and, um, surveys our, um, teachers do about the things that we're doing in the school. And, um, I just wanted to share for instance, one, um, metric that we, that we, you know, have to send every year is office discipline referrals. Certainly, we're always trying to, um, look at what's happening universally in the classroom and see how, how we can start taking care of more problems, more student behaviors, um, more structures and systems that we have in the classrooms so that, you know, things settle down quicker and that students don't have to be sent out. In September 2016, we had 109 in September, just in the month of September. And, uh, this year we had 49. So that's been going down every year, so that's, that's a good thing. Justin and Jeanette's going from Swanton, so she'll be able to hang out with a SU call. And then, just, I had actually put together a lot of stuff about the integrated field review and that's been canceled. It may be rescheduled in the spring, although spring is a really bad time for those kinds of things since we are testing. Did they say why? It seems like a lot went into that. Yes, they did say why. There are a number of medical issues at the, um, AOE in the, um, arm of the AOE that is doing, and in charge of the integrated field. So they did not have the capacity to... I'm starting to feel a little bit odd about all this, because every time we're involved, we get going and then it's a...
But I, I want to thank you and everybody that was, you know, working so hard to arrange things. I feel badly for Maple Run that was supposed to be tomorrow. I think it was supposed to be their visit.
Yes, I was supposed to get interviewed tomorrow. I'm not disappointed about that necessarily, though.
It might have been by me, because I was going to Maple Run. I didn't know who I was going to interview, but that's where I was going. So, yeah. We'll let you know if it comes up again. We will be having parent conferences, conferences this year in November. We've always done, Sheldon's always done two nights of, um, parent conferences, so there was a lot of concern about the structure of the days and whether we'd actually be able to get lots of kids in, uh, lots of parents in. And so we are doing, we have split it up a little. We're going to do Thursday, November 15th, from 3:30 to 7:30, so extend the school day. And then Monday, we'll come in late at 11:00 and do 11:00 to 7:00. And then we'll have a half day of in-service on Tuesday. I actually, uh, I have put it out to a vote of teachers. It just, it, it impacts them far more than it impacts me. So we, you know, tried to figure out what people were concerned about and then gave them three options and that was the option that they, that they chose. And then we have school pictures on Thursday. That's always an exciting day. And then, uh, we're also doing a presentation, um, here in the building from 6:00 to 9:00 PM in our gym called Survive Vermont. I don't know if you've seen that, kind of the sandwich board that's by the, um, ambulance bay. We are partnering with the, um, fire department and they're going to do three different sessions. And it is around how, um, Survive Vermont is, uh, community preparedness for emergencies. So it's not necessarily about school emergencies or school preparedness, but it is, um, of, you know, anyone in the community. I, I asked how many people they imagine might come. And they're, they're kind of preparing for 200. So if there's that many, I would be surprised, but we'll see. So we'll see how many. And we also have someone coming to do a presentation for the staff tomorrow afternoon as part of this Survive Vermont, so I kind of wanted to get a little preview. And it's called Stop the Bleed, so, I don't know. We'll see. I'll let you know how that goes. And then, uh, our DCO sponsors the Trunk Guard Treat on October 27th.
So I, you all just saw my presentate, my newsletter and, and the updates there. I do have a couple of things I wanted to point out that aren't in the newsletter. One, I wanted to make sure I let you know that I did send out letter to the select board about the possibility of metering sewer as they do water. And, um, I said that last week. Took me a while to realize you didn't have a website. No, it didn't take me a while. And the other piece that I would like is to see if you want to make a motion to authorize me to be your proxy or your authority at the Vermont Education Health Initiative meeting that is on the 19th in Lake Maury. And there is basically nothing on the agenda. Uh, I found that out from their secretary yesterday, who's a business manager. But I will be there and I'll attend the meeting. So if there is anything that comes up that needs a vote, I could certainly represent it. But to do that, it would take work to be signed and it would require a motion.
I would like to make the motion to have you represent us at the VHI...
Annual meeting.
Annual meeting, yeah, there we go.
Any others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll have you sign it afterwards. Thanks. Thanks.
Going to an agenda-less meeting.
Well, there's an agenda, I just don't think there's anything to vote on. Bless you. And that's it.
So future board meetings, we have a Sheldon Bond Vote Discussion Meeting tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. We have our next school board meeting, November 13th at 5:30. There was an updated agenda sent out.
I had 5:30. I think it's 5:30. I think this is my draft that's... Because I, she asked and I looked in, in our minutes, said 5:30.
Okay. So that tomorrow is 5:30.
Yeah.
Our next school board meeting is November 13th at 5:30. And our next Franklin Northwest Survivor meeting, board meeting, is November 7th at 6:30 in Franklin. Is there anything else? It was a good one.